Going to get started right away with our meeting. It is nine o'clock. This is our special work session meeting, October the 25th, and we are calling it to order. And we ask if you would stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. And of course, I like to add the kids at Hope directly after.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. We're going to turn the meeting directly over to Dr. Prince for items of discussion, strategic planning.
Good morning, board members. I just wanted to share a couple of things before we jump into it today. I was at the Treasure Coast Business Summit last week, last Thursday, and did about a 12- to 15-minute presentation to our business leaders across the Treasure Coast, really just spreading good news about the district and also the many career and technical education programs that we have, which also kind of segues into an event that's going to be happening right now. And hopefully, if we wrap this meeting up, I'll be heading down to the Sunshine Kitchen Culinary Cook-Off, which I've provided you flyers. And hopefully, I know my goal is to make it by judging, whenever they do that. I wish I could make it by food tasting, but I may miss that portion. But with that being said, last night I was also at the city council and once again, sharing the message of the district, the good news about the district. And not just that, information about the referendum. We have kind of a communication plan with regards to the referendum. Each week, school messengers, texts are going out to all of our families. When families log into Skyward, they'll see the information that's on the ballot, just reminding voters and where to go for information. And as we know, early voting started yesterday, and Election Day is November 8th. Now, with that being said, the privately, the private group that the PAC has paid for an advertisement that will go out on streaming services. As board members, you are free to share that as elected officials. Lydia is going to send you that ad or that 30-second spot if you choose to share that on your social media. That is, I mean, that is up to you. But at least you'll have access to that, and she's going to send that to you today. So a couple of more housekeeping things. Just want to also mention that one of our own, Eric Allbritton, who works for ITS. Eric is usually at our meetings, running the sound box. Tragically, a week ago today, he lost his daughter, Emma, who was a graduate of our schools. I sent you the information on the services, which are going to be this Saturday. And once again, our prayers are with their family. Eric is one of our own, and as an extension, Emma is too. So with that being said, we're going to jump into a couple of topics today. We have kind of three--
Dr. Prince, before you jump in--
Yes, yes, ma'am.
--topics. I forgot to mention that Ms. Jennifer Richardson will not be here today. And she called me this morning and said she wouldn't be attending.
Okay. All right. So we have three different topics today that we'll get through. One is the state has made changes to the graduation expectations for students that impacted this graduating class. So Mr. Ocampo is going to be sharing that information and what that impact will be on the 2022 class and what that's going to look like moving forward. We've also gotten a lot of questions, and I wanted you to be armed with what assessments students are going to take this year. Not just the state assessments, but our local assessments as well. So you have that information. If you get any questions from the public, that you, you know, you know what assessments and what grades our students are taking, what assessments in. And the last is we're converting our policies to Neola policies. And as part of these discussions, we're making revisions and updates to be in alignment with Neola. And one of those has come up is our board meetings. And I wanted just to have a brief discussion and share with you kind of what the trends are with the state, what Neola has. And I needed a little bit of direction from the board if we wanted to make any recommendations, because these changes will go into effect probably in July of 2023. So we wanted to kind of have these discussions and start these discussions with the board now to see if there's an appetite for that. Neola is basically a, it's a clearinghouse for policies. And because it's a company, we, they've done a presentation for the board in the past. But they basically do your district policy updates, and it kind of is a centralized-- Barbara, you want to maybe better explain this than me? I'm trying to do a good job--
I can help you out.
Yeah.
Remember the gentleman that came and did a presentation?
Yes, sir. I just want to know what the acronym is.
Thank you.
I don't even know if it is an acronym, Barbara.
It is Neola.
Oh. What is it, Barbara? Go ahead and go to the mics, so it's part of the record. Okay. So, Will, by the time we get to Neola, Mr. Kelly, we'll know what the acronym means. All right. So we're going to jump right in. I'm going to start with Dr. Wild and Mr. Ocampo.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Prince. I am partnering with Dr. Ocampo this morning to do this first presentation. And like Dr. Prince shared, we are going to be talking about the graduation impact of the changes. We're going to be talking about state and local assessments as well as school grading and the little bit of change that's coming with school grading this year and into the future. So I'm going to turn the first part over to talk about graduation rate. Dr. Ocampo.
Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. This morning, I will be presenting information on the changes to state rules and other conditions that have impacted and will continue to impact our graduation rates. So there have been some changes that impact our graduation rates. First, the 2022 and 23 graduation cohorts experienced pandemic-related educational disruptions. For example, the 2022 graduation cohort, which were the students that graduated in May, experienced a shortened sophomore year and a virtual or in-person junior year, which were certainly not typical for them or our schools. The 2022 cohort did not test during their FSA administration window. However, they were still expected to meet the same requirements. Likewise, the current class experienced a shortened freshman year and a virtual or in-person sophomore year. Because of these conditions, students had less of an opportunity to test for their graduation requirements due to illnesses, absences, and test cancellations. In addition, the 2023 graduating class must meet higher concordance scores to meet those graduation requirements. So there is a requirement to pass the 10th grade ELA/FSA state assessment for graduation. If they are not successful as sophomores, then students have two opportunities per year to take this exam in their junior and their senior year. In addition, they have two other options. They can either take and earn a concordance score on the SAT and/or the ACT. As you can see from the chart, the SAT scores that must be achieved increased by 50 points from a 430 to a 480. The ACT considered the English portion. However, now, they combine the test scores of the ACT English and the ACT reading subtests. And students must achieve an average of an 18. Both of these represent a more challenging requirement for our students. The math requirement has changed as well. Students must pass the algebra or geometry end-of-course exam to graduate. If they are not successful, students have an option, or had, had an option, to gain a concordance score on the PERT or the post-secondary education readiness test, which satisfied the math requirement. However, this year, PERT and moving forward, the PERT is no longer an option. Instead of the PERT, the state will allow the three options of a 420 on the SAT, a 16 on the ACT, and/or a 430 on the PSAT NMSQT math, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which is the PSAT that students take in their sophomore year of school. This represents a more challenging environment and requirement as the PERT allowed our students multiple and repeated retakes, which they can no longer take moving forward. So St. Lucy Public Schools has enjoyed five straight years of a graduation rate in the 90s. This year will make number six. However, the state is expecting a reduction in graduation rates due to the factors mentioned for all districts. In turn, our graduation rate is projected to take a small decline to a 91% or 92% graduation rate. Our comprehensive high schools, however, will be closer to a 95%. The great news is that St. Lucy Public Schools is expecting to maintain a high state ranking for graduation success compared to other districts. This includes being one of five districts that have maintained a graduation rate of 90% or higher for now six straight years. Ensuring that our St. Lucy graduates continue to graduate at high levels compared to other districts in the state shows that the belief that all children are capable of success with no exceptions is occurring in our district. Dr. Wild?
Thank you, Dr. Ocampo.
Real quick, before we jump into the rest, I just want to oversimplify what just happened. So the bottom line is this. This, the 2022 graduating class had major disruptions in testing. Students had much fewer opportunities to get the reading score that they needed with regards to what they needed to graduate. That's going to occur statewide. So statewide, you're going to see a decline in graduation rates when graduation rates come out, probably in December or January. We've had five, we will have six consecutive years of 90-plus graduation rates. Only, we're a very small company that has five consecutive years. Only four school districts have had that success. We anticipate we will take a dip to about 91% to 92%. You're going to see a statewide decline, probably more significantly than that. And our positioning with regards to, we're ranked fifth in the state right now in graduation rating, will be about the same place. However, for the 2023 school year, they have raised the requirements, especially for reading. A lot of our students get that score they need on the SAT, okay, to graduate. They're raising the bar now for that reading score. We anticipate this will have a big impact statewide on graduation rates. And I would anticipate anytime, you know, we have a lot of success, the state starts to play with it, so we have less success. So I just wanted the board to be prepared for the 2023 class, although we're a year and a half away from getting those graduation rates. You will see a significant statewide decline because they've raised the bar so much. So I just wanted you to be aware before the rates come out in December, January. Thank you, Dr. Wild.
Thank you. I realize at this point that many of you are getting questions about testing. And you may recall that in March of '22 last year, as part of a legislative update that I did, I did talk about the way the new testing, statewide testing system has changed and the reality of it versus what people were understanding from the marketing of it. It was marketed as a system that would have less testing. And I think the precise wording is so important because ultimately, the goal is fewer minutes of testing, fewer hours of testing, but it's more days of testing. So I had different charts last year to illustrate that for you. Just a reminder, the new system of testing at the state level is called FAST, which stands for the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking. And it tests students in reading from VPK through grade 10 and in mathematics from VPK through grade 8. In mathematics specifically and other courses, they did not remove the end-of-course exams. Those still exist, and they happen the year you take the test. But with these new FAST state assessments, they happen three times a year, which is why you got calls at the beginning of the year. It's the first year that we've had state testing to start the school year. In VPK, it must be within the first 30 days. And in the other grades, it's at the beginning of the year. One of the changes with the state testing is that the results are immediately available to us. We can immediately see who has tested and their scores. Another misconception of the new FAST or the Coordinated Progress Monitoring System is that the FSA is going away. Yes, it did. But a high-stakes test did not go away. The third test of the three-test progress monitoring series is still taking the place of the FSA. It is the statewide standardized assessment in ELA and math that is still attached to high stakes. PM1, that's what they're called, Progress Monitoring 1, 2, and 3. Progress Monitoring 1 and 2 are for informational purposes only. They don't count for any of the high stakes measures. In fact, you could consider PM1 a pretest, and I'll get back to that in just a minute. So this is just another version of the charts that we shared last year to illustrate the increase in the number of assessments. So if you're speaking to a parent who doesn't understand how this is reduced testing, you can show that previously, let's look at first and second grade as a great example. They didn't have any statewide tests previously to this year. Now they have three in ELA and three in math. So that's an increase of six tests in those grade levels. So you can see that across the board. No change in the number of tests in VPK in end-of-course exams and in science, but a distinct change in English Language Arts and math. They did reduce the length of the test if you compare it to the previous FSA that was once a year. But you can see up here, the length of the test, it increases as the age group increases in each subject area. And you'll see with the end-of-course exams, they are 180, 180 minutes, 90-minute sessions, or unlimited. And that's just in these, in this transition period. They are allowing unlimited time for students who need it, not just students with disabilities. So it's a little bit challenging to capture the exact number of minutes because there is a range. The other piece on the left-hand side there, it explains what computer adaptive tests are. These tests are computer adaptive, and that means that, just like iReady, if the student is doing well, if they have already mastered the standards being assessed, they will move to a higher level of questioning. It's to measure how far an individual child can go above grade level. With that said, the length, that makes the length of the test vary. If you're doing very well, you'll keep testing. Whereas a student who is showing that they've reached their ceiling, that test will end for them. Also, as this test bank grows at the state level, their ability to do more adapting of that length of that test will increase. As they have more questions, the length will vary. So the question that is coming up is, do we still need local assessments? Yes?
When I'm looking at the minutes and stuff, is that paper-based now at levels? Or is that still a computer test?
Excellent question. Those are computer assessments, except for the science.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Excellent question. And that is how you do computer adaptive tests. It has to be computer-based because literally, the questions that are served up to each individual child are different based on how they are progressing. Okay, so this does cause people to say, well, you're getting data three times a year, so why is it that you still need district assessments? So we want to dig into that to really explain that to you. Our district unit assessments are in grades 2 through 10 for English Language Arts and grades 2 through 8 for math. And also, in the courses that have state end-of-course exams, and then also grades 3 through 8 in Environmental Science, because those are all subjects related to state testing. In addition, we do have the iReady diagnostic still. However, it's a little bit different in that it used to be similar to the state test, beginning, mid-year, and end. It is now only twice a year because we needed to drive the curriculum within iReady. So when students take that initial iReady diagnostic on the computer, it then determines an instructional pathway for that child's needs. So without that diagnostic, it would just be generic. And it wouldn't give us the same value or it wouldn't give the teacher the same data as well. This program also gives teachers data on how to group students. We were anticipating, you might recall, we weren't sure if we were going to continue with iReady. That is because we were hoping that the state system would have a computer-based curriculum attached to it. It does not at this time. So that is why we made the decision to continue iReady. It does provide a lot of value to our teachers, to our summer camps and so forth. And it also provides us predictive data when we are analyzing how ready students are for the state test. Our district assessments--
Dr. Wild, can you go back one? Because I just want to spend a little bit of time--
Sure.
--on the district and unit assessments, because this is really important to our success. You know, we've had unprecedented success over the last seven years. And if I were to attribute it to one thing, it would be our unit assessments that we create internally by grade. And basically, those are assessments where you teach a unit of study and the students get an assessment. That is normal. That's what we call good practice, okay? But it does more than that. It drives all of our decision-making as a district with regards to Mr. Frank, the chief of schools, and our principal supervisors, our executive directors of schools. All of our conversations with principals are what teachers need support, what teachers are most effectively teaching the standards. And we can see this across the district, how our schools are performing. We can see how our teachers and our students are performing. It also drives our collaborative planning meetings, where teachers are planning together. And it's that backward design model where you know where the end is and what needs to be taught to get to that point. It also drives all of our remediation, where you see the standards that the students are not getting that have been taught, how we can go back and spiral back, reteach things to students so that we can keep our kids on track. So those are really critically important to us. And I just, I can't say that enough moving forward. Sorry, Dr. Wild.
No, no problem.
Can we go ahead and discuss this a little bit more, too?
Yes, but--
Go ahead.
Hold it for just one second because I do have another slide that goes a little bit deeper into what Dr. Prince was just sharing. And on this slide here with the length of the test, I also want to point out, previous to us starting our district or unit assessments, teachers created their own. You will recall that, even when you were all in school, teachers do a chapter test, if they're, you know, along with their textbook. And then when they complete a certain number of chapters, they would do a unit test or a quarterly test, whatever they called it. These have replaced those teacher-developed tests. Teachers now utilize common assessments district-wide, and it has replaced that part of it. In what Dr. Prince was sharing, we included in here to give you a comparison between what the state assessments give us versus the district assessments. The state assessments, what's really very different about them is the first two, PM1 and PM2, they're testing the standards for the entire year that the child is beginning, not after they've been taught. So it's clearly a pretest. That doesn't tell a teacher how their children are doing with the lessons that they just heard. It doesn't have as much value at the classroom level. Although it's necessary, it still is providing the state what they need, and it's providing the high-stakes assessment at the end of the year. The district assessment, as Dr. Prince shared, measure what standards have been taught. And that allows us to do a number of things. He mentioned it allows us to, at the district level, compare schools and provide services. So when the curriculum and talent development and school renewal departments meet with the executive directors of schools, we mobilize our support for teachers and schools based on that data. We also are able to make curriculum adjustments. There might be something that is not strongly emphasized in a textbook and that this tells us we need to supplement it. So it's very important data at that level as well. As well as telling us exactly what an individual child needs to remediate, what a teacher needs to reteach to a whole class. So there's so much value we get out of those district assessments. And I agree with Dr. Prince, we can't overstate that. And actually, we get a lot of calls from districts who haven't been able to get to this level of effectiveness with unit assessments and get the buy-in that we were able to achieve many years ago. And now, we're asked for more and more tests. We actually have made sure not to increase the number, and we've actually decreased the length to try to compensate for the increase at the state level. Mr. Ingersoll, before I go into school grades.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So a lot of us were on the board when we started doing iReady. And the purpose of iReady was, I remember this, the red colors, the green colors, the yellow colors, and let you know when to go on with a student. I think we're past that level nowadays. And just, and just what I'm hearing some teachers say, and particularly in older classes, and predominantly with the 5% rule, with the governor's thing. And I know we fall within that rule. But the question is, is with students with disabilities, do they fall within that rule? And that's a concern because when they're taking double the amount of time that regular students are doing because they need it, it, you're spending more time testing them, and they're missing out on other education purposes.
The 5% rule applies to the maximum length of the test for the non-accommodated student. So accommodations are not included in the 5% rule at the state level. We are far within the range. I will tell you that this year, it is a little bit of a fuzzy number statewide because they haven't told us, they haven't, it's a baseline year. Whenever you have a new set of assessments, it's a baseline year. So the length right now is an estimate. They will lock those down as we go through the years, as they establish cut scores, and it'll be a firmer number. The state also, as part of the same legislation that started the progress monitoring and the FAST system statewide, there's a whole other section that is about reducing test time. And it's a study that's going on, and they have until, I believe, 2025, if I recall correctly, to come up with more strategies to reduce testing. So that is something they're looking at. And I think part of that, I'm believing that part of that is going to be to come up with a computer-based instructional supplemental program that would align to the state test so you're not forced to do another assessment like an iReady. That was a long-range goal that the state had. They just haven't come to realize it yet. Yes, that data that you described in the red and the green and the yellow charts, we do that same type of charting with our unit assessments and our district assessments. That is one of the benefits of iReady. But the other is that computer individualized curriculum that it provides, which teachers can use whole group or small group. It's in a lot of elementary schools, it's a center with a computer where a teacher can work individually with a group of children. And then they're also getting individualized instruction from the computer. We use it in our after-school tutoring programs. We did entertain not having it this year, but the overwhelming voice that we heard is that teachers still wanted it, more so in K5 than 6-8. But it is something that we're constantly evaluating, and we expect changes in that arena going forward.
Just from a perspective of, if you got, and I know PM1 and PM2 test on subjects they haven't learned yet. But if we're doing our unit assessments, which are a little too long, too, but if we're doing our unit assessments appropriately, you're getting real-time data and you're able to change teaching and instruction to particular needs on the dime. If you're a football coach, you want to make changes at halftime. You don't want to wait three games later to make a change. And I think that's the difference between the tests. I appreciate iReady. I just think the time for that has come and gone. And teachers may want it, I haven't heard that, I just hear we're test, we're getting, we're going backwards with more testing rather than trying to progress. And I know it's because of the state testing, the first nine weeks, and everything was jumbled up. But there's a concern out there that we are hitting.
Right, so I believe you're saying that if you were comparing the value of iReady versus the district assessments, you believe the district assessments give us more pinpoint data for real-time changes?
100%. I think it's more appreciative. I think the district has done a phenomenal job, just like Dr. Prince says. I heard our superintendent praise the district assessments, I've heard teachers praise the district assessments, and then questioned the iReady. I have heard after-school programs using it, and using it effectively. Maybe that's the need for it, but not for all 90% or 80%, you know, a certain percent of our students.
Thank you.
Dr. Wild, could I ask, when is PM two administered?
The middle of the year, and the state board is setting those timeframes. But I believe it's going to be, it's a December-January window.
Our window is in January.
But the state window is December.
State window is December.
And we're still looking at those windows based on some requests from teachers, but it is a mid-year, mid-year assessment.
And Dr. Wild, the PM two is tested based on what the children have learned from the beginning, or is it?
It's, PM two is a mixture, because it is, it's still testing all of the standards the child is supposed to master by the end of that year. So if it's a third-grade student, PM two and PM one have all of the standards that the student needs to know by the end of the year. So at the mid-year, about half of them, they would not have been taught yet, and the other half, they would have. So it's a blended.
And of course, as you said earlier, it's not, it's not something that is going to be accounted against us or for us, because there's, they're testing just to see where that student is.
Information purposes only, you're absolutely correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on the assessment section of this?
I think iReady needs to definitely continue, you know, as you know, I have an after-school program. And as you mentioned, it is vital in our after-school programs, because while we're working with homework with others, as you said, that iReady keeps that child continuing those children that we're not working directly with. And we do a lot of small-group changing over, so that we can really help our district in improving our students' intellects.
Yes, and iReady recognized that because there is a testing component, that it was going to become problematic with the state testing on top of iReady. So that's why they did make the adjustment to not having three assessments, and they're continuing to work on how can they have an individualized curriculum path without the diagnostic test. And we work with them regularly on trying to make improvements and adaptations to their programs to meet everybody's needs. For school grades, of course, whenever there's a new assessment, we've been through it many times, there's a change to the school accountability rules, especially during the first year of the changes. So for the 22-23 school year, school grades will be baseline grades only. They are for informational purposes only, which means there could be no sanctions or penalties. So if a school currently is an A, B, or C, and their informational grade moves them down to a D, they do not go into state oversight. There's no consequences or sanctions from the school grade. It does give us information for how we're doing with the transition to the new standards and the new assessments. However, the grade will not come out in the same timeline that it usually does, because they have to set cut scores and make the adjustments that they always have to make with a new assessment. So it'll be coming out in the winter next year. The most challenging part of a baseline year is that we don't have learning gains. Because they don't have a previous test to measure it against, they can't tell us if a student made a year's worth of gain in a year. So their, school grades that they give us will be based on proficiency only. So a Level One student that starts at the bottom of Level One and goes all the way up to the top of Level Two still hurts the school grade, because we're not getting learning gains. So due to the absence of learning gains, the state has said that they will adjust grades to give us, statewide, to give the same percentage of As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs to this past year. So you won't see drastic changes across the state in the percentage of As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs because of this baseline year. Whenever they do this, it does have a greater impact on pure elementary schools, K through five, because they don't have the other components within their school grade, the acceleration components, and of course, exams, the graduation rate. This is just for illustration purposes, the percentage of As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs across the state. And so we expect it to be pretty much exactly the same because of the way they will set the baseline grades. And I'm going to reference this chart in a minute. So, as I already said, they're going to be adjusting the grades for this year. But there is also, in a separate bill, what's called an escalator clause. This is always concerning. They've done this once before for high schools, but this is much bigger. Beginning with the 23-24 school year, if schools across the state do really well, they're going to make it harder to do really well. So they're going to raise the cut scores to earn an A or a B if too many schools get an A or a B in, by school type. So elementary compared against elementary, high against high, for example, they're going to change it. So if you look back, right there, you can see 55% of these schools were As and Bs. If more schools are successful and that reached 75 in any school type, it's going to be harder to get an A and B. So you'll see a drop, and it'll be hard to explain that to the general public, that the criteria changed, not the performance of the school. And that's it for school grading. Most important part about that is, it's a baseline year with information only.
Just a couple of comments. The better, the better you perform at something, basically, they've legislated it so that once you reach a certain threshold, they're going to raise the bar so that everyone does less well. So, and the reason we talked about this, or I wanted to talk about this, is two things. One, is they're doing it with graduation rate. You know, districts are becoming more successful, students are passing those assessments in algebra and reading, so now the state is raising the bar and making it more difficult to graduate from high school. The other issue is with regards to school grades. The more A and B-rated schools you have, the state reconstructs that so that fewer schools can achieve that status of an A or a B. One thing that I wanted to point out is, students are going to be taking that assessment, the third performance, the performance measurement, and they'll take it in May. We'll get immediate results, but we won't really know what those results mean, because they haven't established the cut scores. So school grades for our schools will be proficiency only, and those won't come out until November or December. So it's almost like next, this school year is kind of just a baseline year for everything before we kind of know where we are with regards to how our school and our students are performing. So I just wanted you to be aware, especially come evaluation time, when you come and evaluate me, because I won't know really how we performed. So, with that being said-
You want to hear something funny?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Ingersoll.
You take these tests, and you get them right away, right?
Yes.
PM one, PM two. So in May, you take this test, and you get your scores right away, but you won't get the answer until November.
Yes.
That's funny.
Well, so-
You take the test, you send it away, and you got it back for-
So I do have an answer to your question, Mr. Kelly, and I want to, I want to share it, but I'm going to have to read it, because honestly, I didn't even remember it. But Barbara, Barbara Sattika-
I'm remembering now.
-has texted me. Thank you, Barbara, for getting that information. NEOLA stands for Northeast Ohio Learning Associates. Yes. And it provides school board policy services that are guaranteed to be in compliance with federal and state law and state Board of Education rules. So they guarantee that as part of their service.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it back, because the man was here, and I think I asked the same question.
Yes.
When he was here.
Yeah.
And it's kind of rhetorical, I mean, it's Northeast Ohio.
Yeah.
Let me say this, and I don't want to be negative, because I think a few weeks ago, I called you-
Yeah.
-and I asked you about our test, if they were tested by the district only, and we had a discussion about it, and you gave me your same kind of information that we're talking about today. And I agree that they're probably a part of our success. Don't you take this in any way differently than I'm saying it, okay? And that's good. The bad thing is that, and I'm, I'm kind of giving you what I think is the majority of people in the county think, including most of the teachers and myself, having had two teachers in my media family over the years, we do too much testing constantly. I don't even know if I, if I asked Dr. Wild, how many tests they're subject to on the state, district level, or whatever, a year for the kids, I don't know. But it just seems to increase every year. You would know better, you've been here forever, so I don't know. So there's too much testing. But you look at the state things, and echoing what he's saying, it doesn't make any sense we're testing kids on something they haven't even learned yet. And then there were a couple of tests on there, correct me if I'm wrong, Helen, but there were a couple of tests on there that, the results of the test are only for informational purposes for the state, and the results are not released. We don't even know what the results are. Is that true?
PM one and PM two are for informational purposes, but they do release the results. We do see the results. But they're pre-tests.
Okay, well, I, the way it was written up there, it looked like they didn't. But they're not used for any, any ratings or anything that we would do.
To your, to your point, I can answer that question. Progress monitoring one, progress monitoring two, the one they take in, you know, August, the second one they take in December-January. We get the results, but, but the usefulness of those assessments is far less than what we get from our, our local assessments and how we, how we reteach and how we address gaps in learning. So to your point, the answer is, we don't get as much use out of those, absolutely.
Okay.
But I don't have a choice as to whether or not the kids take them. Yeah, so, yeah.
And I think that's, I think that's the bottom line, you don't have a choice.
Yeah.
We have to deal with-
Right.
...state statutes and rules and regulations and all of that, and we have to abide by that. So that's what I think a lot of times the public doesn't understand, is that-
Right.
-we have to do it on the local level, based on what the state has decided what they want done.
Two quick things I want to say.
Yes, sir.
I know it's more testing, and I can see the need for it, that's why I was asking you a few weeks ago, because I knew this might be coming up. I don't want to stop it, I think, you know, it's necessary, because the state doesn't do it the right way. However, it is, it is too much testing, and it does increase every single year, so we have to keep an eye on it. The thing with all of the testing, and I'm going back to Dr. Mills, because when she said something, it just hit me, and I never forget him, about educating the entire child. Nowhere in any of these assessments that we have, especially, and I just took a charter school course on purpose, spent some hours on time learning all about charter schools and what they're required and not. And most of them do not teach the entire child. We do. But nowhere are there assessments on when that child graduates from high school, what we did to increase their social activities, their professionalism, the, everything with the sports, drama clubs, I mean, there's nothing in there. All it is is arithmetic and writing and science and biology, and it's not about the whole child. And I just, your concept is what I'm all about, you know, with the after-school stuff that you do, and we all participate in, and that's not measured anywhere. So it's just something that's there, and I think our school district does a better job than any, we do a great job on that, after-school stuff and all the extras that we do, but it's not measured anywhere. Helen, you know what I'm saying? It's just not. And to give people tests on something they haven't learned yet, I don't understand. And I'll leave you with this, a very important man who, many years ago, I was sitting at the senior staff in the World Trade Center for a big organization I worked for, and we were number one, best things we ever did. And I'm sitting at a meeting, and they changed everything. Everything was being changed. And I thought to the president, I said, I don't understand, sir. I said, we, we're number one, everything we were doing here, all our, I mean, they were drastically changing things that we were doing, in sales and how we were getting brokers and everything in the real estate. And he said to me, he said, Jack, I'm going to tell you the truth, he says, the thing is, we charge people money, franchise fees and everything, and if we don't do things, if we don't change things and change, and look like we're making things better, he said, then they think that we don't deserve it. So is this, a lot of this stuff done for sake of change, and because people have jobs and they want to keep it, and they want to change it? I think so, yeah. So I don't know, mixed emotions, mixed feelings about it, but if we have to test them for the district, I'm with it. John, you sold me on it, and the same questions you were asking, it's good that we do that. But we do not evaluate the entire child on it, just like you say. So I'll never forget, you taught me something. Thank you for putting up with me.
And I must say that many of the children, many of the children, when they come in outdoors after school, have to be taught that. So there, it's lacking somewhere. It's lacking at home, it may be lacking not having what you're talking about, you know, here. In, as far as state, we have to always go back to state, because there's very little we can do locally to, to do outside of what the state is mandating us to do. So, but it is neatful, I see that very much so. We have to teach children social skills. And that shouldn't be, it should be part of our curriculum, but, you know, at this point in time, you're correct, the whole child is not, and even financial, financial situations, how to deal with the credit cards, and how to deal with the banks, and how to deal with life itself, and budgeting and so forth. Yeah.
I see the need for the additional testing, but I hope as time goes on, the tests go down, that we don't test as much. I just, that's, I think most of the teachers agree to that, we agree with that, and most of the public do, too. We test a lot, and we're not testing the entire child. Thank you.
All right. No, and point noted, Mr. Kelly, and I, and I do, I do, I do agree with you. You know, the public narrative is that we change this and we're going to less testing, when actually, we've added kindergarten, first, and second grade three times a year. There's actually district-wide more mandated testing by the state. I do, I do want to pivot to NEOLA, because I need some direction from the board, and I wanted to have a discussion about this and where NEOLA is on this particular policy. So we're transitioning to NEOLA policies, and district-wide, we're updating all of our policies, and you'll see all of our, all of our policies that will be coming to the board that have minor revisions to be in alignment with federal and state guidelines as part of our work with NEOLA. One of the issues that has come up is, is public speaker protocols and unscheduled speaker protocols. And currently, you have two, two handouts. One, I provided you, and it's got a highlight, and you can barely see it, it's so small, and I apologize, I needed to get extra strong glasses to even read it. But, but NEOLA's policy for scheduled and unscheduled speakers is at three minutes. So three minutes for scheduled speakers, three minutes for unscheduled speakers. Currently, our practice and our policy is five minutes for scheduled speakers, and then three minutes for unscheduled speakers. You were also provided a handout, Dr. Wild, did they get the handout? Okay. Ah, our chief of communications, Lydia Martin, is going to hand us out.
She was waiting for your introduction.
So what we did is, I actually had questions, because as we were having this discussion, as we were having this discussion, the next question I asked is, well, what is, what does our practice look like compared to other districts? You know, where is, especially the Treasure Coast in our area, you know, how do they handle board meetings and scheduled and unscheduled speakers? And basically, we charted out all of the districts that Barbara personally contacted and checked with them on how they handle board meetings and speakers and unscheduled speakers. And we charted this out for you, and I just wanted to start the dialogue today to get a direction from the board. if we want to move in a specific direction or if you want me to make a recommendation to the board with regards to these policy updates, if we're planning on making or you desire to make any changes. So with that being said, it is the Dr. Helen Wild Show. And she's going to share with you a little bit about this today and then we can have a discussion about it.
I think you just did a great job covering it.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's fine. As, as he said, we are transitioning in Neola. And, you know, as we were looking at this particular aspect of Neola policies, we immediately noticed that, that difference there. And then we noticed that across the state, five minutes is really an outlier. And we want to make sure that whatever we do, that we are ensuring that community voice is heard. The bottom line is when, when a topic on the agenda garners a lot of interest, we want to make sure that we can hear from as many people as possible. So we did look, and I want to thank the legal department for pulling together all this information that you have on the handout. We looked at the various configurations across the state for time limits on public speakers. And you will see the most common one is three minutes regardless of whether it's for a hearing, agenda items, unscheduled speakers or scheduled speakers. And as I already said, ours is five minutes. If you have a lot of speakers, five minutes is a long time. So we, we honed in on the districts that have protocols that reduce the amount of time if you have a lot of speakers. So we were looking at Brevard, for example, and there's others like this as well, that have three minutes up until you get a certain number of speakers. And in Brevard, it's 10, and then it goes to two minutes, and then it goes to one minute. And the reason for that is it does increase the likelihood that more people will speak. You know, they'll have the patience to stick around until their turn. It reduces duplication because if you know your time is going to be shortened, you're going to make sure not to be repetitive. And it increases the likelihood of, you know, community members speaking. It could be perceived as unfair to those that get there late to the meeting. But, you know, we would publicize the policy if we make any change in this direction. So over time, people would become familiar with it. And basically, there's other pieces of Neola about the board meeting and public speaking, and Dr. Prince gave that to you. But for today's discussion, we were really focusing it on the time limits and taking a look at moving to three minutes and then potentially discussing a staggered system. And I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Prince.
And I just wanted to, to hear from the board currently, you know, certainly in other districts, we've been very, very fortunate. I think it speaks to the professionalism of our board members. And I would, I would commend you, being in this role and even being the deputy, I was certainly interested in how other board meetings are run. And not just run, but also the interaction between the board members. And I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate each of you as, as board members. You, you are just class acts all the way. You're honest, you're clear in your communication, you're clear in your direction guidance to me. I never feel uncomfortable when we're at a meeting that, that, that we can have an open and frank discussion. So we're fortunate. Now, on the flip side of the, the good fortune that we have, I think because of the culture that we've established, that that starts with the board members, that you've established in your interactions, especially with each other and me from the dais, I think the public sees that. And we, you know, when the, the public has come to speak, you know, we've got fi, currently, we have five minutes for scheduled speakers. Now, as you look statewide, that three minutes is more alignment with where everybody else is, is in the state. Some districts that have had a lot of board interests, where you've got a lot of speakers, like Brevard County, have gone to time limits where they've gone to, you know, 20 speakers, they, they reduce it to two minutes and then more speakers, they reduce it to one. And the, the positives of some of that is simply because if you've got five minutes per speakers, if you've got, you know, 10 speakers, why would I sign up to be a speaker? Because that's going to be an hour into the meeting. And actually, having a little bit less time may, may, may be a good thing because it actually allows more folks to be involved in the process. So none of this discussion, what I'm sharing with you right now, moving forward, would happen until July probably of next year. That's when it, when it would start. But I needed from the board if this was a, yes. Well, we can, we can do it, we can, well, the bottom line is what we're, our goal is to make sure that all of our policy updates are done by July. So we're currently in the process of updating all of our policies. So it, it can, it can happen as soon as the board member, board members want it to happen. But I just wanted to say, we can, we can take our time because the, the policy revision process is taking a lot of time. I just wanted to bring this up to the board to see if there was any discussion on whether we wanted to make any adjustments with this particular policy.
John, could you put that back up?
Yeah.
The other, with the three minutes?
Sure.
It isn't about us with the five minutes. I've been through this, every other board that I'm on, it's three minutes. With the city council, we had new people get elected one year. Went through 100 speakers talking about five versus three. It allows more people to speak. I mean, it's, and the way that is, the more people, the lower the time, more people get to speak. And I, I got to say it was over a 90% from the public, a 90% correlation to, to do this type of thing. The only thing that we missed, we made a mistake, is that you have to make sure that if somebody gets up there and says, I have three minutes, but I'm only going to speak for 10 seconds and I want to give my time to Mrs. Hawley. Okay, we got to make sure, you can't do that because we had that happen and we had to cut it right away. But I don't see any reason why, I mean, I know we don't do it at workshops, why we couldn't do this right away. I mean, that's the way we did it on city council a couple of times. You could, you know, if you have two other votes, you can do it. This is, this behooves, this is good for the public. I mean, really, it's.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion. Because I wanted, I wanted to hear from, I wanted to hear from board members in a, in a, in a public setting before we, before I do anything with regards to making any recommendations, I just wanted to see what the thoughts of individual board members were.
Wow. Helen, do you have something to say?
I was just going to say to Jack's point, if you wanted to move it forward, before we do all the Neola, we would just put it on a board agenda item as a policy.
That's right, that's all you have to do.
Well, somewhere along the line, we need to make sure that we're all in consensus. Yeah, just, just the, the agenda items, obviously, I was the one to bring this up. You know, I talked to Wayne about this six months ago, seven months ago. And it came from a training, is it's always good to be proactive and have a policy in place before you have an issue in place. And that was one of the reasons why I felt it was important, and I'm probably sure other board members came and talked to superintendent too, that we needed to look at this and discuss this. Some other issues that I had was the amount of time a person can come up and speak to the board scheduled, as a scheduled speaker too. The fluency of it. We have 12 meetings that are publicly broadcasted, you know. And I just want to make sure that it's the narrative that is correct going out to the public. If that makes sense. So a guest speaker comes up and says, you know, Troy's truck's white, Troy's truck's white, Troy's truck's white. My, my truck's red. If they're going to get up and speak publicly and do it on consistent basis, it somewhat needs to be correct. And I don't know how to do that except limit the amount of time a person can get up and speak, you know. And that, that was part of my, my feeling is, you know, we could end up having speakers get up every time and speaking stuff that three or four speakers and then the narrative is, is not what is correct. So that, that was part of my concern. Obviously, the amount of time speaking too, not allowing other community members in to speak because it's sort of like what Jack said, and that's a concern. And then the other one is, is I know when we're all different chairs, we take non-speakers at different times. I always said before we got to the consent agenda, if you turned in your, your, your speaker's form, you can turn it, well, turn it into Chris Harrison and you'll be able to speak at the end of the meeting. I would like to see a policy for that too. I'm not sure if there is one. Go, go ahead. Because, because we all need to be uniformed, doesn't depend on who's the chairperson.
It is in our policy, exactly the way you just stated it, in our current policy. In Neola and some other districts, it is different. In some places, you have to be, the form has to be in before the meeting actually starts at all. Some places, it's 15 minutes before.
Well, that's, that's where I was going because I, I knew what the policy was. I just wasn't sure if the other board members did. But I, I would prefer that to be changed because we're sitting up here having a meeting and all of a sudden someone starts walking towards the front. You know, we've had our, we've had our, our, our Star Awards, our proclamations and then, you know, whoever's the chairman starts the meeting and since someone starts walking up, you're like, oh, what's going on here? I, I think for, for security, I see Troy here shaking his head and says, yeah, that would make sense. So, you know, some, some other policies need to be addressed too that, that, and I'm not saying take till July, but we do need to sit down and talk to the superintendent, some of your other issues and make sure that we're all on the same page, that, you know, maybe you're running 15 minutes later and, and having it before the consent agenda and they turn it into a security officer rather than walking to the Chris Harrison. You know, maybe some of that needs to change, but the reality of it is, is I'm with Jack. I mean, we can't have time limits. And does your time limit on a non-agenda item also proclude you from not being able to speak as a scheduled speaker? So you get three minutes on agenda and I'm in three minutes as a nun, as a scheduled speaker? Is that in there?
That is not in here.
Well, that, you know, so.
There is a decorum policy in the Neola one about how people can behave. There's also a policy about recordings.
I haven't read it, I just got it here.
Right.
So just, just, these are the questions that I have for, for board members too. I mean, am I the only one that feels this way? I mean, I'll probably talk more unless y'all.
I, I just, before when, when he said why, I thought you were, you know, I, government, the gears move very slowly. There's no reason why this can't just be done in a meeting. That's my feeling, but, you know, everybody does it this way. I mean, I don't, I'm not on another board that does five minutes.
Oh, I'm not saying, I, I agree with you, but I'm saying the whole policy, I mean, because it's all one. We just don't want to change one of it now and then three months later change the rest of it.
Why, why not?
I don't know, Prince, tell us why not?
Okay, all right.
Well, I just wanted to have a, I'm getting a lot of very useful information as we get together to write these policies with Barbara. So I just wanted to hear, I didn't know if Ms. Hawley or Dr. Mills or Chair.
I was going to ask Ms. Hawley if she had some comments. I certainly do.
Yes, I do have some comments. Well, first of all, I'm not sure on, on the one, the handout you gave us today, if that's ones that, suggestions that our district has looked at and put together. Because there's a couple of things on here that I'm, I'm not positive about. My hesitancy with doing it immediately is that, the perception of, of changing it immediately. I, I can fully support going to a three-minute time. I, I think that's exactly where we need to be, to be in line. I'm not so sure that it's, I just hesitate to do it immediately for public perception.
May I answer your question as well, Mrs. Hawley, on this, on this chart? We did not put, we did not vet this, we just put everything they told us on here. So just because it's on this chart does not mean it's a recommendation of staff.
I'm thinking, looking at this one, Helen, specifically like under A, guidelines regarding the amount of time, number two states the time period may be extended by the presiding officer. I don't think we need that kind of leeway in it. I think we need a policy that says you address the board chair when you're speaking and that's it. So, you know, that's part of my immediacy.
Right, and that, that wasn't the recommendation. I was just, I just pulled the Neola policy just to share that, that, that the three minutes was pretty consistent with regards to other districts and also with regards to kind of nationally where boards are with regards to scheduled and unscheduled speakers. That's not necessarily saying we're moving in that particular direction.
I guess then what I'm saying is we need to really look at the policy and make it a solid policy that's inactable in totality.
Okay.
And I would also go to when we have our charrettes or when we go to like gymnasiums and have a lot of public speakers, you know, look at, look at some policies that would affect us there. Like who's going to be the timekeeper? You know, Superintendent Duzeney or is it going to be our, our board secretary and stuff like that? So, so it's in policy that we're not questioning or, or stuff like that.
And, and to Mrs. Hawley's point, I, I completely, I completely agree. Like if we looked at this issue in isolation, you know, I don't want it to be perceived as reactionary to what's happening nationally at school board meetings, okay? But I did want to have this conversation because as we're transitioning to these Neola policies, this particular issue has come up. Quite frankly, you know, I'm not in a rush because this process is taking us, it's going to take us all year to get through this. What I needed to know from the board is if there is a desire for me to make a recommendation moving forward, you know, and, and I'll work with you with regards to a timetable on that. But all the policies we have as a district, you're going to see them start to come before you that we'll be revising to be in alignment with, with Neola, which is in alignment with our federal and state guidelines. So, you know, but, but to your point, I, I definitely hear what you're saying and, and I, I completely agree with that too, because we have to be sensitive. And my, my, my attitude about this too is, is trying to get more, not less, public input. You know, I think it allows us to hear actually from, from, from more of the public.
That's what it's all about, exactly.
Yeah.
And you're, and you're, and I'm, it's okay, your statement about being reactionary, everything we do is reactionary, John.
Yeah.
And, and maybe it's because I'm very old, I don't have a lot of time. And maybe that's it. So every time I speak, I'm, I'm speaking from a different perspective than everybody else. But, you know, when you get near the end of your life, you, so much wasted time and you should have did things quicker. In fact, if you know it's good, just do it. And in the beginning, young man said, why? And I'm saying why. Yeah, you can pull it out and change it. It's a good thing, it's good for the public. It isn't something that we're doing because we don't want to hear somebody for five minutes. We want to hear more people. And to tell you the truth, we don't have the problem right now. We don't have, like you said, we're fortunate. We don't, we don't have a, a problem really with this. But things are going to come up that we don't know are in the, in the future. And there will be, and you're going to want this, to have this type of policy when they do happen. And, and the city council came up many times, but you, you got to react to it. And I give you a, a good point, a, a big one, that when you want to change things like what we're doing with the district with the test. Many years ago, the city of Port St. Lucie went to water and sewer and that city council got battered. Everybody, the newspaper, you're forcing people, well, you know what, quarter acre lots, you're drinking somebody's septic next door when you, when you don't have, have water. They changed that years ago. No other city, and I'm not doing this because I'm trying to make a point, no other city can really did what the city of Port St. Lucie did. The entire city is not city water and sewer. The only one ain't even near this size in the state of Florida. No one can do it because it's too expensive now. And if they didn't do it then and react to it and do it because it was the right thing to do, then in there, it wouldn't have happened if they waited too long. It's just, it's a big thing compared to this. I know it's apples and oranges, but still, if something is the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, drink septic water or, you know.
Yeah.
You know, but this is the, I just, I'm not on any other board that does that. I was surprised when it was five minutes and I got elected, I didn't know that.
I'd like to make some remarks on this. And public participation at board meetings, as we've already said, is very important. We want the public to participate in the board meetings. I am not on board with immediately giving this recommendation because it's important to me to be able to look over these notes that you've given. And I can't do that in just here and now and just say, okay, let's just do it. I have to look over this. I see that there are some, one thing I want to say is that I definitely I definitely agree that we need to change some policies, and, and do some other stuff when it comes to board meetings and public participation. I do agree with that.
Okay.
A little concerned about the, the three minute, even though so many, I'm, I'm being told so many people are doing it. St. Lucie County have done it our way for quite some time, and I, I, I can see possibly reducing the scheduled speakers and making it the same, but I'm also looking at, if a person go out of their way to send in a form to Chris, and they want to be a public speaker, well, what's the sense in even sending in the forms if everybody's got three minutes? So, I have to, I have to think that through a little bit more, to see if it is fair to do such a thing where everybody has three minutes, but yet, we're still saying scheduled speakers versus unscheduled speakers. We may have to critique that, or do something in that area, if we're going to do it straight across for three minutes, but again, I have to, I have to look at this, because it's a new thing that's come before me. And there are some areas that I've read here that I say, "Oh, this would really be good for us to bring in as a, a procedure change," but again, I have to do more studying on what I've just been given, and make a formative decision.
Dr. Mills brought up a, a great point, and the difference between a scheduled speaker and an unscheduled speaker is, one's you're on TV, and the other one, you're not. So, that's the difference between your three minutes on TV, three minutes off TV. That would be something else to look into, is the amount of time that they have to turn in the scheduled speaker form. I know, you know, so, that, that would be something else that we need to look at too, the amount of time of that.
Okay. All right. Dr. Mills, that, that concludes our, our topics.
So, do we, as a board, do we want to set a time period on this, like January, February, so, so that we can, and I, I know what you want to do, Jack, right away, but...
My preference is to have the entire policy reflect, having to do with public participation at board meetings presented at once, not to do it in segments.
Yep.
And if we can do that by January or February, then I'm fully on board with it, I just don't want to do it in segments.
Well, would you, would the board like to, us to put together a proposal and have a discussion at a, at a workshop?
I, I would prefer that, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Honestly, I would prefer if someone would just talk to each board member, not, not poll, but get, get their, I, I mean, I threw out a ton of ideas, but just go and talk to each board member, and then put it, compile it, and then, and then, then do it, rather than us workshopping it together, and having the same thing we had today.
All right, that's easy, I can do that.
Okay, I just, I just, I just don't understand, what's the study? Five minutes, three minutes, 10 speakers, two minutes? I, I don't understand, but I'm okay, I guess, I, I'm, I still, I still learn from you, the whole child, so we'll go, I, I'll compromise, but I don't want to wait till June. It's like, Debbie, it's like saying, "I'm not going to get my brakes fixed, I'll wait until I need my oil change, and, and get everything done at once on my car," so, I, you know, I'll wait on the brakes, you know.
But, Jack, it is, it is more than just this three minutes, three minutes, this, there's, there's quite a few areas that we need to critique and, and bring in as procedures, and, and, you know, tighten some stuff that's going on, so there's, there's like, I guess, how many pages here that was given to us? I have to read over that stuff, I can't just jump out there.
It's just a general tune-up, a general tune-up, it's not just fixing the brakes, but whatever.
And I do agree with Ms. Hawley in that we should not do it in pieces. I also agree with Mr. Ingersoll, in that it would be good to have somebody that can talk with each board member, rather than have that, I thought that was a good idea, rather than have the, the workshop together on that type.
Well, I will, we'll make sure we reach out to individual board members, and I'll, I'll commit to early next year, bringing something back to the board in some way, shape or form, in its entirety, and then we'll go from there, and I just, if, if I could politely ask you to leave maybe the timeline to me, I'll, it'll get done, but just, we may have other things that come up that are pressing, we just don't know, so, we can't predict the future, but I just needed to hear this, to, and I think I've got a good idea of the direction we're going to go, so.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Prince, um, thank you all, them board members today with the workshop, and administration, thank you each for your presentations and being a participant of the workshop. At this time, we are adjourned.
All right, culinary cook-off.